From the seventh meeting as presented, if there are no questions or discussions, we will have a committee to approve that presented.
We have two policies to discuss this evening. Policy fifty eight, fifty oh, excuse me. Automated phone and text messaging. Who's doing that? Mr. McWilliams.
She's just on delay. It's okay. There's not a ghost here.
Good evening. All right, I'm breathing in. All right, so the policy five zero zero eight of automated phone and texting. As you can see, there is some just a change at the very top. And then there are some changes throughout that you guys probably already looked at. And so we are recommended where the superintendent is recommending these changes. But there is not anything that we seen that was any significant of or any concern. So this policy, we think this policy should be passed through. And so the superintendent recommends that this policy is passed.
Now, I think we'll move on to policy sixty four oh two. Who had that one?
Mr. Weber is going to present that in the absence of Mr. Hill.
Okay, good evening, board members. This is a policy that the board reviewed at its last meeting. These are changes recommended by the School Boards Association. From a legal perspective, I don't have any recommended changes. There's only one decision point for the board, which in the second sentence in the first paragraph, there is optional language that allows the board to include a percent goal for the total annual value of goods that would come from minority owned businesses, female owned businesses. The board's current version of this policy does not include that optional language. Again, it's not required. It's something that's in your discretion.
Question that percent that is not included in the policy. When will that be inserted or is it going to be inserted? How will, how will we know when we are actually meeting the requirements of the policy? If we don't know what the goal, what the percent goal is.
And I'm happy to defer to staff on how that information is kept. I would say again, just underscore what you just said. It's certainly a goal, not necessarily a requirement, even if the board chooses to include it. But I'll defer to staff on how that is tracked now.
So I've been saying that it varies.
I think Doug Hill was here. He was talking about not worrying about his percentage as we would strongly encourage us to pursue. Cause percentage would be pretty.
Well, can I answer? Either we insert a percent or that just leave that out completely because that looks like it's an oversight. You should understand. So.
But I think Doug would refer to the good faith effort percentage. So it could easily walk. Move the percent out, just say we strongly encourage us to. That's where he got.
Right. And I will say again, so from a legal perspective, that's a great point. So the entire sentence can come out, you know, just need to leave the percentage out. So the board, you know, would like to strike that. You take that entire, I think it's only a single final sentence.
But who is our school, nine percent of the total annual benefits? Systems purchases and services to come from contractors, we own businesses. Dun 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 dun. If we don't have a percent, we don't need, from my perspective, we don't need that sentence. I think a sentence is important, but we don't think it importantly enough to put a percent. So when I pick up that policy next month and I look at it, I have no clue whether we met that goal or not. You see what I'm saying? I saw Mr. Dunn and then the thought.
You were here last month. We read this and we tabled it if there was not yet for some direction that what percentage should look like, what we should include. Not having anything there, I would certainly keep favor to strike that people strive to include all the groups.
So then I, we did talk about it in one of them guys. I'm in favor of keeping it because I think we need that reminder that even if we don't have a set percent, I think it's just such a heavy wish to try to figure out what that percentage would look like and how to calculate it. But I think it's important to have it. So even if we don't have the percent, in my opinion, as a part of our policy, to recognize and also what that says to the community about what we're working for. So even if we don't have a percentage, at least that's a reminder that this is something that we do work forward when we try to, try to, you know.
If we put the board, it strongly encourages systems purchase of goods and services to come to contract minority owned business, female, who say well, include the wording.
Include, but not limit to, right.
Yeah, absolutely. You could take that second sentence and change it as Dr. Ellis just described, where you just take the board strike aspires for blank percent of total annual value of and just, I think, keep the rest of the, the rest of the language there. The board aspires for the school systems purchase of goods. I'm sorry, you could just take that, that sentence and strike after the first two words, the board. You strike aspires for blank percent of the total annual value of. And if I'm reading it in my mind, the way it would look, I think the rest of it would still make sense and it would still give an aspirational direction to your staff here.
And because I did miss the, all that making that, I mean, yeah, this question then. Um, I'll be to present this for first reading tonight. Yeah.
As a parent, I mean, we did get ended directly. So that's a concern. I don't know if this is just something that we need to have as a policy or if it's something that we actually work to do. Some things, policies that are favorable, they have no weight. And are we doing a concerted effort to make sure that we are inclusive and making sure that we have minorities? When we are doing purchasing contracts and things of that nature. I'm asking a question. And maybe there's not an answer for that question, but are we just doing a policy? You could say we have a policy. Or are we doing a policy so that we can make a change?
Well, personally, I would like to see more teeth there. When I look at the policy, I would like to know what to expect. There is no teeth in this. So I would propose, and it's up to the community to vote in, I'm for James. But I would propose that we table it again and ask the staff, Dr. Ellis and staff to actually bring us back a sentence in this policy that we can live with. That is not so vague.
So if you strongly encourage, if you don't go strongly encourage, you probably wouldn't go for a cent. Does that make sense? Is he, I don't know how you go to do it. So do you?
It doesn't really matter.
And Jason, I'm asking you, so a percentage. I mean, that's where we got stuck. So I will be, I'll probably go and talk to him about. But that's where we got stuck on it last time. We figured out if you want to go with percentage or do you want to go with strongly for? Percentage, you're right. That's great. You get a number of things if we're doing any types.
It's made trouble. It's made trouble. This is not.
That's what we're doing.
Right.
But the whole process of we purchased items into the, you know, it's a bidding process. Have you been tracking this in the past, monitoring how we've been doing businesses with others or, or not? Well, there's that wall.
Yeah. And I can speak to this more from the federal perspective. And you have to get several bids when it comes to that. And I can't guarantee in a specific area that I'm trying to get a service that any of these people would even have a business to provide. That's why the percentage, in my opinion, goes in. But then rather than the labor, the one today, we either vote to table this policy till we get the words nothing correct. Or we absolve the policy for what we agree because they will lay on the table today. And we'll have time to readdress it if necessary and see if we can get this forwarded correctly. And if I might, I would suggest that we have a motion that would approve. Let's do them separately, the two policies. And let's go ahead and do a motion to a few policy fifty oh eight. Automatic phone and text messaging. And then we'll do the motions separately for sixty four oh two because the board will be dead.
The important thing, I know, just to address what you said, what you asked, like, what do you, what do you think? The difference is that we all are professional people. And so we know if it's not documented, it isn't. We document and say, this is what we aspire to, and this is what we work for. And we don't hold ourselves so accountable that, you know, we kind of get legalistic, but to know that this is what we aspire to other, otherwise this is a conversation going five years. It's not going to matter. Nobody, you know, we we need to have something documented that says this is what we strive for, even if we can't put it on because I mean, we have lots of departments. Moving parts, so that may be difficult to really quantify, but I think it's important to be a part of our structure and be a part of the system.
If I can quickly just offer clarification on, on that second sentence, then I just want to make sure I have the language right. The board will be approving it with revisions. Dr. Ellis's recommendation was what I'm going off of here where it would read, the board strongly encourages the school systems purchase of goods and services to come from contracts with minority owned businesses, female owned businesses, disabled owned businesses, disabled business enterprises, or nonprofit work centers for the blind and severely disabled. Is that the language under consideration? Thank you.
Still have policy fifty oh eight on the, on the floor. Is there a motion to put that? It's been moving improperly. Exactly. That we approve policy fifty oh eight to recommend to the board for first reading. Is there any discussion? Here in, I'll invite her say. Oh, no. And just for the record, we do have a form, Mr. Gray, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Polo, and I am here. The second policy there is sixty four oh two. Is there a motion to recommend to the board that we approve this policy for first read with the additional wording that Mr. Weaver just spoke of. Second. Do read the statement again, Mr. Weaver.
Yes. So the policy, the second sentence in the introductory paragraph would read, the board strongly encourages the school systems purchase of goods and services to come from contracts with minority owned businesses, female owned businesses, disabled owned businesses, disabled business enterprises, or nonprofit work centers for the blind and severely disabled.
Did you, you two want seven, you'll have a game. All right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say. Oppose, no. Motion here. May I ask, Dr. Ellis, if that change could be done prior to a meeting for first reading? So when it's looked at at our next meeting, people will be able to see exactly what we're talking about. Is that possible? Just that one, that one, something, yeah.
So we're not worried, or we express the percentage or what we just.
Well, you're in the sentence, but I'm just ready. Yeah, because we'll come, this is gonna be for first reading tonight. Is there, you look up.
My concern is, my concern is our actions. That, that's my concern, our actions. We have something here in the policy. And will we, have we been educated, being actively searching for or given opportunities to those various minority bits listed? That, that might, okay. So I think that when we talk about goods and services, it might be a good time to maybe to committee me this policy, Dr. Ferrum, to show you how this works, how it goes out there, advertised. I mean, that I, if you. My, you're right. Yeah, I would. I think it's good to show you how we. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the policy committee? If not, I will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next, the next committee meeting will be student support services and operation committee.
So like to bring, welcome everyone, and I'd bring this to order. Somebody call a roll. Dr. Shavis. Just in time. Ricky Jenkins, your daughter, Washington.
Here.
Evelyn Bullock. So everybody's here. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the meetings minutes from last time. Is there a motion? Motion made and second was made. Everybody approved. Say a. Any denials? Very good. So at this point, we're going to roll into some information. Got transportation updates by Michael Bear. Please, yeah, I know he's here. There he has been seen. You have the controls. Yeah. Good evening, board. So so we're going to start off with the current number of students that we have routed on buses. That number has changed. It's six thousand and fifty six that are routed today. And, and every day there's more added. Our goal is probably about sixty five hundred students. I'm expecting this year to be routed. McKinney ventos, we have around thirty two that need to be routed, seven EC students that are still not routed and we're working on them and workflow, we still have three hundred and ten transportation requests to be done. So we're, we're knocking them out as we go. All right, so today I want to explain to you the total number of runs. Runs, we have four hundred and seventy runs at our school system. A run is a single bus picking up students and dropping them off at a single school, right? The average driver right now does at least five to eight runs a day. It should be two runs, you know, maybe three runs, a midday run. So what's happening is between the runs, the drivers having the runs, they're doing a high school, elementary and a middle school, three runs in the morning, three runs in the afternoon. You know, we have a total of a hundred and six drivers starting this school year. And it was my fault, but I didn't count on the percentage of being out. I figured if they had two months off, they would want to be eager to come to work and work, but but of course we have to count on that seven percent of being out all the time. So we only have ninety eight drivers available if you take in consideration of the seven percent. We have twelve sub drivers that are not available all the times. And most of these drivers, well, unfortunately, our driver hate count is currently lower than it was last year. Well, to start out school year, we're five drivers down. And that was our last board meeting. And we actually lost two other, two more drivers since then.
Mr. Barry, when you say drivers down, can you clarify that you were referencing in terms of the total number of drivers we had at the end of last school year?
Correct. So last, last year, the school year, we had a total of about a hundred and twelve drivers. And right now we have a hundred and six drivers. If they all come to, come to work and actually work, we have a hundred and six drivers. We need at least a hundred and twenty one drivers to be doing the routes to actually get all the schools on time. That's my goal this year is to have a hundred and twenty one buses on the road every morning and every evening. As, as of today, we have a hundred and thirty one buses and thirteen new buses coming. We have three new buses that come in today. We have to, we have to put in consideration of ten percent of these buses being down all the time due to maintenance PMs. So the total number of buses that we could actually have on a road, adding the thirteen would be a hundred and twenty six buses. So and that's why I come up with a figure of having a hundred and twenty one routes per day. This, when I say twenty, a hundred and twenty one routes, I'm talking about routed buses each day. So so slide four. I'm sorry. All right. So this is the exciting part. So we had twenty seven individuals that were hired as TB TA slash TB, teacher assistant bus drivers. We have thirty one TAs that opt in and have eleven of them driving twice a day already. So we have seven more that are subbing for us every day with a total of fifty seven, I think it was fifty seven TAs that are either working for us ha- having a bus class in the next two weeks or subbing for us right now. Right? So we have a total of, I know this thing has changed since I've done this, but I think we have a total of twelve drivers that actually want to work for the school system as a full time bus driver. So our, our first class, and I reached out to the DMV already, talked to Fred Garner. We've got one class set up eight September eighteenth through the twentieth. And then once that class is done, we've got another one set up in early October to finish out the the training for these. But I want to explain to you how long it takes for a driver to get a bus license. So when they go through a three day class and it's three day class here or wherever with a DMV officer, they take the test, they pass the test. All right. Then they get their permit. They go down to the DMV, get their permit. They have to hold that permit in their hand for fifteen days before their driving test could start. They have to get it scheduled. The DMV officer that we have schedules between two and three drivers a day to do the testing. And that's the reason, the reason why is because most of the time we need the buses. You know, so they'll do the test, they'll start the testing and that's nine o'clock and they finish up around two. So they'll have the bus to do the rest of the day. So if you're talking about fifty seven drivers that need a bus license, you know, after the three day classroom test, three day driving test in the fifteen days they have to wait for. And with one DMV officer, it could be up to December before we get all these drivers with bus licenses. But I'm, I've reached out to DMV and they're going to send us some help to get them not, I mean, because we could do thirty, thirty at a time in the class, but we only could do two or three on the road test. And the road test is a two day test. So they're going to send some more help to do the road tests, probably starting in October. All right, slide five. So once the TAs are hired, transportation goals are to add, to take away the elementary schools in the middle of the three. Are to add, to take away the elementary schools in the middle of the three, three runs. We've got high school, elementary, middle school going right now. Our goal is to take the elementary off, give it to a TA, and they're running the elementary morning and day. The average TA at an elementary, there's probably going to be a five, because they're still signing up right now. There'd probably be an average of five TAs that could drive and they're going to rotate it, you know, between morning and night. The goal is to have the average number of drivers to have four runs a day in the city. But when you get to the southern, southern part of the county. You know, they might only have two runs. They might have a high school in the morning and a high school in the afternoon because of the miles they put on. Six, please. Okay. So we're adding twenty-one drivers. We're adding twenty-one drivers to ensure we hit our goals for on-time buses. You know, this is, this is the schedule that looks like. If we add the twenty-one buses, we got City High, nine buses. EC, we found out this week, we need another EC bus, that's twenty-three. Elementary, forty-six, and high school and middle school will be sixty-three buses for a total of about a hundred and twenty-six buses. Of course. Southern counties, like I said earlier, they're going to be doing one school at a time. Alright, so next slide. So we'll continue to enforce the policies and procedures, holding people to a higher standard of work performance. Unfortunately, we had fourteen people decide that they're not going to work today. All week long, we had average of seven people out. And it's right now, if if they want to hold, if they want this to get better, it's going to have to get worse before it gets better. Because we have to hold them accountable for their actions. You know, and that's if they call out, suspend them without time. That's something we have to do. And I'm willing to do that. So does anyone have any questions? Yes.
As far as the new drivers, is this possibly, how are we looking for monitors on these? Because I know if they're a new driver, that might be very important because that student control not yet issued.
And that's, I talked to a few elementary school principals and Ms. Griffin, one of them. And she told me that if she has a student driver or a TA driver, she's probably going to put another TA with that driver as a monitor. You know, and I think all of them will probably do that. I know DS Johnson in Fairview, they use their teachers as monitors for us right now. So I think they're going to be all on board for doing that.
Next question. I know you, and thank you for holding them to a higher standard. We do need people that are dedicated. However, if it's a bona fide true emergency, life and death, are you making evaluating?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Well, you, thank you.
Dr. Shavis, if I could speak to the monitor situation. We do not receive a part of money per se for monitor. And so then you put monitors on bus unless a person decides to volunteer. Then that is another form of payment and it has to come from somewhere. And the transportation budget is limited. And to be quite honest, we, because of COVID and because of the lack of drivers over the past two years. We've been able to do some things that we normally would not be able to do if we had everybody in place and working. So trying to get monitors for all of our new TAs would be an issue unless. You have someone like Ms. Griffin at Cooper's who's willing to ask teachers to volunteer. But we do have some buses that have monitors. In most cases, those are our EC buses where EC funding, I think.
Awesome, and I know it's a limited resource, so that's why I raised that question, but I could definitely appreciate the possibility of the monitoring.
Mr. Jenkins.
This might not be, this might be.
Okay.
But a lot of these kids. You just call and call and say the bus does not run, they can't get to school. No plans or determined by mistake, a lot of times, maybe it's counted against the kids, it's not. So if one of them plays sports and he can't get school bus, then he can still play that sports that evening or whatever. Last year, we. Talked for us was about those kids are. You know, to add that account, you know, that's going to turn after Sebastian, so it's different, but. What I appreciate, Dr. Farley, as far as doing it, you start running quadruple loads. You rarely have a kid not have a bus, they have a bus, depends on how it moves on.
Yes.
That's what I think. I just think when you say it's said that, because when you're running fifteen down, you're running quadruple load. But you're running buses, that's completely, have a stop route, that's where it doesn't have. But but you're also talking about kids getting to school later. And I'm trying to get, actually, we just, I think I gave you all a sheet of where these buses are wrapped.
I've got that for you too.
So that information, but last year, it seemed like it was a southern end of the county with two schools. It was a district, two schools that really were having a lot of pain, so. Your wife. By, you know, you're doing a good job. We're getting where we need to get, we need to hop, that's what you want. The, which getting to train, that's what it's called for, so I'm committing, which you.
Mm-hmm.
So. I know it's heading, thank you for all the effort, because I know it's just, it's what it is, but like we have some buses that just say, we just don't have a driver today. And it's actually been several buses, so what can we do to. We can't exactly fix it overnight, but like you said, doing three or four runs, I think that's better than saying this bus does not have a driver. But is that something that we can. Do more of, because there are some things that don't get cool enough, rather than getting there at ten or ten-thirty then to not be able to come enough. Because that's happening, where some kids just don't get to do that.
And that's what we're doing, a lot of times, we'll reach out to the drivers and say, hey, this, this bus is not going, can you take their run with them? You know, so we'll take their twenty kids or twenty-five kids and put it on their bus and they're picking up fifty, fifty-five kids at one time now, rather than their twenty-five on the average. So we're combining the routes, we're asking people to, you know, take an extra run to make sure that every student is picked up.
When drivers are paid. And it may be better for the law, I'm not sure, but I know that you told us information, but I just want to go back over in a while. When they, when the TAs drop the bus, like say in the afternoon. They're leaving their classroom and then they're stepping into the bus driver room. So what is the pay, which I know that there's something that happens there, can you clarify for me again? Because I know you have already, but just as a reminder, like how that works.
So. Mm-hmm, okay. So all TAs are paid on forty hours. And we move them to that because of the discrepancies between thirty-seven point five to forty hours. They are paid at the current rate that state says they should be paid at at this point, which is fifteen dollars an hour. Unless they have additional experience that takes them above that amount. So once they leave the classroom. They clock out. And then they clock in based on the bus driver system. And if they exceed that forty hours, then they are paid that time and a half fee for overtime. And that's forty hours per week. But that could offset if a TA comes and is out a day. That's going to take away from that forty hours, so it's a total forty hours per week. And anything above that per week goes into overtime for the particular position, which would be a driver in this case. And they do make more as a driver. And we also increase their pay two dollars and fifty cents more per hour if they opted in to drive a bus. Now. That's right. That's right. That's my.
Thank you. At this time, we'll get some information about the Nashville Police Department SRO presentation. Dr. Pharoah will take the lead on it, and we have Chief Winstead.
Good evening. Chief Winstead is here with us from the Nashville Police Department. And there's some information that he would like to share about the possibility of being one of the SRO providers for Nashville Elementary. If you all would remember, he and one of his team members presented some information last year. So Chief Winstead.
Hi, y'all, this evening, thanks, sir. Uh, thank y'all for letting me come speak to y'all again tonight. I'm gonna call it the squeaky wheel gets to oil. Uh, and Mr. Lamb threw me a, I'm gonna call it a bone in the newspaper the other week about SRO positions. And it's, it's bad that the sheriff's office, along with myself, we have a shortage in law enforcement. I mean, it's, it, that's just the fact of the nature of the beast at this point in time. Um, the sheriff's office is down fifteen to eighteen people. I don't know that they hired, they interviewed a couple today, don't know if they placed any. I'm, I'm down for myself, but it's just, it's everywhere. Um, but I do still have, at the time I spoke to y'all last year, I had two personnel that were certified through the state of North Carolina to be SROs. Since then, one of them got offered way more money to work for Rocky Mountain than me, so he went back to Rocky Mountain. But I still have one that is certified and willing to go. Every day, I still, my guys go to the school in the morning or traffic in the afternoon for traffic and we walk up and down the halls every day, different times of day. Currently, there's one deputy that goes in between Coopers and Nashville back and forth. I believe, don't hold me a hundred percent to the times, but they're there in the mornings before lunch. Or they're at Cooper's in the morning, they, they, they switch throughout the day. I don't know how their times work, but always, my guys are always around. And you know, it's tragic that last week, there's something that occurred at UNC. At the, the amount that they have security-wise invested in their school, you know, we would like to try to do something like that for Nashville. So with that being said, we're still interested very heavily in to presenting, having the SRO position at the school. A vast majority of the parents there have made comment to me and said they are willing to sign a petition to give to y'all, if that would help with any decisions there. Like I said, I know with the shortage of the sheriff's office and everything else, it would help them free up, especially at some other schools, if we supplied somebody full-time at the school. And like I said, we're still able to encumber the rest of the cost that the grant or which I'll have afforded don't cost for the office, so. But that's where we're at. Like I said, even, even if y'all don't. We can't come to agreement and put us there full-time and we pay us, my guys are still going to be there every day doing what we do to make sure that. Our town people are safe, along with our kids there, because Nashville is one of the, other than Reddick, to my knowledge, Nashville is one of the largest elementaries in the county and it's in the middle of our town. So we wanted to make sure that all the kids in the faculty are safe there. Any questions? Thank y'all for y'all's time. Oh, yes, sir. I have somebody more, eight o'clock. But, but like I said, we're going to be there regardless. I, I would love to get some type of financial revenue from it, but like I said, regardless, I'm not going to stop performing a service to the school or the taxpayers either way. But we would like to have somebody there twenty-four seven, just because you, you build a rapport with one person. Yes, sir, yes, sir. And then it allows the kids to build a rapport with one person. Um, and they get to know that one person, they feel like they can talk to that person instead of it's always being a new fresh face that comes in there every day, so.
I just want to seek clarity also, a minute ago, you were talking about how the sheriff's office does the rotation. So what I'm hearing is sometimes they're there in the morning, sometimes they're there in the afternoon. So regardless of what it is, it's only part of the day.
Only half, half the day, yes, sir. I don't know what schools do what. I do know that Nashville and Coopers, because my kids go to Coopers, that whatever deputy is supposed to be at Nashville. They're either going to be at Nashville in the morning and Coopers in the day, or they're going to be at Coopers in the morning and Nashville in the day, so that I don't know what timeframes they split it, but they, they split it, so.
And it does need to be that.
Yes, sir.
Um, however, you are offering.
Twenty-four cents.
Full, full time.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Uh, wait, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Two questions. Um, basically, how does the sheriff feel about his and how much of it's discussed? Is the human workers to give up Nashville Elementary and, um, but basically this.
Uh, last year when. The. To regard the MOU, the MOU is just a contract that anybody can sign. We already are with MOU with the county. All last year, during graduation, high school graduations, because the sheriff's office was so short, I had security guys at, my, I worked security myself at Southern. And I had guys at Northern in another high school because security was short, so we already had signed the MOU so we could work and provide security. I haven't spoke with the sheriff since last year when I started this. And there's no disrespect to the sheriff when I say this, but the sheriff's concerns are to the county, the schools that are in the county and everywhere else. When I can provide coverage to the, the school that's inside my jurisdiction in my town, we can cover that and the sheriff can worry about all the other county schools that are out and about. Being a deputy, I understand what's out there and what they have to do. And if I could take one thing off the sheriff's plates and help him, I'm, I'm more than willing to do it to provide something to the school. Yes, ma'am.
The question. We discussed it at the. Help me understand why we are back here today and the board had to know additional information as to why. We should be revisiting this thing, so. Again, I'm confused.
So at the last board meeting, I believe it was with the Lamb. Lamb, Mr. Dan was at requested that we talk to the Nashville people because we are lacking elementary SROs, is that correct, Dr.? So we invited. Act repeating to come again. That's the reason. July, we would have to do an RFP, you know, you, we would have to do the same thing. And it's the same conversation, but I think Mr. Lamb is concerned that they haven't done all of the SROs, so.
And, and if I could speak to that, Dr. Ellis, if the board remembers, we. Completed an application for an, an SRO grant with the Center for Safer Schools, we were offered that grant. That grant allowed us to provide SROs at our elementary schools. And it also paid for the funding for SROs at our middle schools. Our middle school SROs are full-time, being that they're there all day long. What we wrote in our. In our paperwork for the, the grant for elementary schools was that one SRO would serve two elementary schools. Being that that SRO would be, as he said, maybe at Cooper's in the morning and Nashville in the afternoon and vice versa on days, however they work that schedule out. And so we did that for our county schools and we did that for our city schools with the Rocky Mountain Police Department. Last year, as you remember, because we were unable to, or the departments were unable to hire someone for a time, they use off-duty officers to work the schools. And so some days, we had folks, some days we didn't. The city of Rocky Mountain has been able to fill all of their positions this year. So when we look at our schools within the city limits of Rocky Mountain, they have an officer assigned to all of our elementary schools. To all of our elementary schools and that one officer is serving two schools. Um in the county, the sheriff department is still working um to fill that. Um in my last conversation, I think I was told that by October, they should have at least two. Of the SROs in, um and that they were still looking, still working to try to find individuals um to. Fill those roles. Um so we're looking for two more SROs for the county. Um schools again, um I was told it would be October when those first two. Um would be on board and then we will be looking for two more. So they have two officers in sight, two officers that they're working on getting trained. Who hopefully we will have in place by October, but we still will need two more.
Reason this is different, we have had time to assess the situation, especially as it comes with personnel. Because when this first started, we didn't know what it was like at first then. We got scheduled. Thought we had people and now we're seeing that with the way the state of law enforcement is right now. And the lack of personnel and the lack of funding and Scott Barbe that for just a second, if you go and crank out your computer right now. You're, you can go into about any Google search you want to and you will see that most law enforcement agencies are short. And Sheriff Stone is doing an amazing job trying to fight for his people to get more personnel. By getting more pay and he is constantly hitting up the uh commissioners for it, but he's hurting. And he needs, he needs money to fill those spots, but right now. We're worried about students and Sheriff Winst- I mean, um.
Chief.
Chief Winstead is able to provide us that one or two more persons just for right here. That would actually help the sheriff be able to move that person to the schools to help out with schedule. So that is why now is the great time to bring it back up and to revisit this. And so ultimately, it's helping our kids by spreading the SROs back where they need to be in a time where law enforcement is lacking.
Yes, ma'am. You get a chance to question. Yeah, sure.
I'm saying, and I, I understand that, um I just honestly think we need to take a different direction. I don't know why we're trying to figure this out. I think the conversation should not be between us and either agency. I think the agencies need to sit down and decide. Because you guys are essentially partners. You sit down and have the conversation. Uh and I understand it, I understand it. Um you have the conversation beside what you think works best and you're the partners and you partner with us. To decide, to then let's bring it back and say, hey, okay, well, we think we can go this direction, that direction. I totally agree with you, but I think that we should let you guys come here, sit down, let's talk so that you can work that out and then. We just need to come, we need to discuss bodies and I think that's important, but I think there needs to be a conversation between those two agencies. Not necessarily.
I think the reason that it's on y'all is because of the funding is through the grant and comes to the school board and the school board is gonna decide who they write the check to.
I understand that, but you're part.
Oh yes, every day. We work, we work together every day.
Right. You guys can sit down and say, well, you know what, this is. Or you know what, no, we worked it out. I think we should maintain. I think that we should turn it over to them to, to decide.
I'm sitting here thinking. It seems like, I think I remember the same way that conversation. And I know that. You know. And I don't know. I do. Wonder how it. Do we have? One group. And the other one, not come, is not fair. It is not fair to. To name and I agree the decision is ours. I agree with that. But I, I think that getting a little piece of information here. And a little piece of information over here later is not the way we should be doing this. I think we need to have a meeting of both entities. So that we can get a full and correct understanding of where we stand. And how we can get protect our young folks. I'm not. Ready to say yay without having both party. At the table, talking to us at the same time. I think that's unfair.
All right, no, no, this was for information only.
Yes, but I think we need to go beyond just one entity. I think for information only, yes, but I think we need to get information from the both entities. At the same meeting so that we can listen and look and make a decision that is best. For our children. Right now, I've got this piece over here and I'm wondering what's going on. Surely nothing, of course.
So Dr. Ellis, can we get both back next month?
Yep.
Done. Alright, uh are you guys, alright, any other questions? Yes, sir.
You know, we have one more information, one more information. We have the sheriff already going, I've worked with both SROs. I work for small schools that had town police, did a lot more. But they did not have SRO trained officers, did not get paid for anything they did. But they helped with regular traffic, whatever was asked of them. We just need to make sure that right now both are short end. We've got SRO officer trained naturally to start tomorrow. God forbid anything happen at the school, but I'm gonna always vote on what's gonna affect the most easily. That's where I stand on this whole issue.
Thank you, sir. Um at this time, uh are there any other questions, concerns? Make a motion to adjourn this second. Alright, discussion. Uh stand adjourned.
Thank you. Next committee, um it's gonna be Ms. Thomas Bullock. Academic Services and Accountability Committee and then we'll follow um thereafter with Administrative Services and Operations.
Okay, so at this time, I will call the Academic Services and Accountability Committee for order. Um we have a phone call, Mr. Lamb. Captain Washington here.
Yeah.
The vision is not here and I am here for. Um so. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, um with the minutes from August seventh, twenty twenty-three, um so.
Second.
Okay, so it has. Um to include those minutes from August seventh, twenty twenty-three, um any discussion possible? Okay, so all those in favor, both side of the aisle. So. Today we have two action items and two items, um just for information. So I will very own first to Mr. White. This harder of Joe.
Good afternoon. I will share with you today, um two of the extended learning opportunities. That Nash County Public Schools was able to offer our students during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Alright, so the first opportunity was the After School Math Academy. The After School Math Academy was really um from a state funded grant, PRC one eighty-nine. And the purpose was really to mitigate some effects from COVID nineteen. It was really aimed at students who needed more support in math in grades four through eight. So we were really intentional about offering this opportunity to our students in those grade levels. Who really demonstrated some proficiency in math, but ju- needed just a little bit um more help. So we held that academy and we actually invited approximately three hundred sixty-four elementary students. And so that was fourth and fifth grade and then in grade six through eight, we had two hundred ninety-four. Um students that we invited, so that was almost seven hundred students that we started off with. And sixty-six teachers that we employed for this program. And even though those were the initial numbers, I think by the time the program actually ended, we had more students that really joined. It was held at every elementary school. They housed this program at their school. And part of the grant that we had to abide by, this math time had to be offered either before or after school. So it was outside of the regular instructional day. So schools chose two days a week. To hold their students for ninety minutes, Monday through Friday. We really had Tuesday, Thursday. And Monday, Wednesday sites and we started in March, it continued through May. So students had a total of nineteen weeks or eighteen sessions in math. We did provide transportation and snacks for this After School Math Academy. Some of the celebrations and you can see the pictures there, the pictures always um speak a lot louder than words. But through this program and really working with those fourth through eighth grade students. We tracked the students that were in attendance at least fifty percent of those eighteen sessions. And we had about half of those students actually meet proficiency on the EOG in math. So you can see students really working hard, hands on. It was great that they could get that small group. One-on-one help from teachers. Also, the center picture shows Nita. So we even did it online with our students in our virtual academy. The other um extended learner opportunity we wanna share this afternoon is our Summer Scholars twenty twenty-three. Summer Scholars Academy is really a combination of a whole bunch of mini camps. It encompasses our state legislated um summer reading academy that has to happen for students in first through third grade. We also had students CTE opportunities, our migrant education program. And also our district sponsored um programs for students in other grades pre-K all the way through twelfth grade. So we had all of our grades involved in our Summer Scholars Academy. Uh oh, we're happy. I didn't do it, whatever it was. Okay. With Summer Scholars Academy, we invited approximately four thousand students. Um pre-K through twelfth grade for that traditional SSA program. Um for CTE was a hundred students, about twenty-nine migrant students. And thirty of our students with the Extended Content Standards were invited to what we call Summer Scholars Academy as a whole. These camps were held at eighteen of our schools, elementary through high school. I think it was seven elementary. Four middle schools and seven high schools. Um that list will just tell you exactly what schools we used. And what um we kind of grouped students to go to schools that were near them if we did not house a program specifically at their school. The schedule was Monday through Thursday for elementary is eight to one, secondary was on a nine to one thirty schedule. That traditional SSA started after the fourth of July, so it's the week of July tenth through August third. The migrant education camp and the CTE camp, both of those camps um had camps that started in June. It ended um August third. For SSA, we did offer transportation and breakfast and lunch were provided. Our celebrations from Summer Scholars Academy, I am pleased to say when we think about our RTA and read to achieve. Legislation, those second and third graders that have to come, we had seventy-two third grade students. Um actually meet reading proficiency as defined by our RTA legislation during that camp. That number is a lot higher than we've ever had. I think last year, every year we increased. Last year we had forty-seven and I was really pleased about that, so I'm super excited about seventy-two. We had five hundred fifty-five high school credits recovered um during the Summer Scholars Academy. We also had twenty-five of the twenty-nine particip- participating migrant education program students. Achieve growth and reading and um one of the major celebrations is, you know, we had the student interns when we first. Presented this to the board, we talked about how we were so excited to offer intern experiences for our. Our community through Summer Scholars Academy. Actually, three of those summer interns are actually employed with Nash County Public Schools this year. So that is really um amazing. We wanna keep that going. If you look around, there are also pictures from Summer Scholars Academy. You can see them engaging in those STEM. That science, technology, engineering and math activities. Also, there's a flyer. For the summer meal sites that we were able to offer the community um during this time. Now, Mr. Thompson will come and share the CTE celebrations from Summer Scholars Academy and entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I wanted to uh take your attention to the pictures starting out, so you notice on the far right-hand side, we had three camps. For CTE, which we were very proud of. We had an exploration camp, which included our sixth graders, rising sixth graders. A bridge camp, which were our rise in ninth graders. Those are two transition years, so we thought those were very important for careers. And then the last, we had a career internship and credentialing camp for CTE. And the pictures will show at the bottom, the first two pictures at the very bottom are STEM. We integrated STEM activities. In our camps this year because of course, uh we have STEM careers. Uh the second, the third picture, once again, is Nashville Fire Department, so we visited fire departments. We visited um Nash uh hospitals, the Cheesecake Factory, Edwards Crane. Uh so that goes with the first bullet point, students toured a variety of businesses, industries and post-secondary institutions. Uh throughout the whole summer, so that was amazing uh for our students to get to go into those areas, see what the work's about. And really make connections, which was our second bullet point. They made those connections to the pathways that we offer here in the district. So they can see what they're interested in because that's what we really are trying to get to. And then the last piece is that some of our students earn uh credentials this summer, uh one being OSHA ten, some food handler. Uh so that's something that we're very proud of as well and felt like our students did an excellent job. And uh we feel like we've got some great feedback on the camps as well. So at this time, we will entertain any questions that you have about any of the extended learning opportunities. Mr. Short.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear what you said about the CTE and career paths as far as going into its work sites. How many students actually went to those work sites?
So a hundred and three. We all opened it up to everybody in the district in those rising grades and that's how many we had actually. If I wanted to come, we were shooting for uh fifty, fifty to fifty-five slots at every school. That we were at, um but we ended up with a hundred and three and so we, we're gonna have an opportunity next summer as well. And so we'll keep building off of.
So did you get response back from the uh businesses as far as how it went for them?
Yes, they think it's excellent. Uh we, you know, we do work-based learning throughout the year also and we place interns. Uh we are building those uh, those relationships where we can place those interns in there already. And they, they're seeing some great things right now of our, from our kids and hiring them immediately.
Second question, food cool. Did you have, weren't we looking at a food cart?
We do, we have a.
And we institute a operational?
The culinary food lab, it is one hundred percent operational and we are, uh we need to do a grand opening, honestly. Uh we're not, we're not, we haven't had that yet, but yes, uh we wanna do a piece where everyone can see it. Uh that will actually serve our culinary arts uh students. Uh and they will have an opportunity to take real life, as you know, everybody's doing food trucks and food carts now. They can do that and get the business side, the cooking side and all of those pieces of a fo- food uh lab, mobile lab.
Thank you. We had a trial run at a little.
We had a trial run at a little.
We, we will make it happen. We are one uh vacancy away as a carpentry teacher at Rocky Mount High School and we have every other position filled. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. The superintendent has approved two requests for research this month. One is an expansion of a program that we are already involved in. The. Um Be Calm is what it's called. It's out of UNC Chapel Hill. We are already using that program at some of our schools. And they, we, um I believe they were elementary schools were our first, um the first ones we approved. And we are looking to expand that to Edwards Middle. So Edwards Middle does have a new principal and so this was kind of agreed upon before she came there. So we went and sat down with her. Talked about that, had her do the research to make sure she was still comfortable with that and she was. So uh the superintendent has approved. For that one to expand. And then there's a new request, um an exploratory case study on teacher leadership and school improvements. And this is from Tristan Hunter at the University of Phoenix. They will be examining the current experiences of teacher leaders in rural K twelve schools to understand how teacher leaders can be used to increase areas. Um of school improvement. So that one has also been approved. Yes, so alternative schools in the state have the opportunity to have an alternate accountability model. Uh they're alternative schools, so they have an alternate accountability model. If you'll remember from, we're right now in the middle of SPG release. Um if for traditional schools, it's eighty percent achievement and twenty percent growth. The um is the formula. And so for alternative schools, they can choose to sub, to follow that same plan, which is the traditional plan. They can choose to, the district can choose to write a plan of its own that has to be approved by DPI. As far as I know, no districts are doing that. And then the other option is to do an alternative plan. And our um Tar River Academy, which is our alternative school, uh the principal and I sat down and talked. We looked at the history. We traditionally used this alternative plan and she wanted to continue with this one. And with this one, per student persistence is twenty percent. And so basically, that's how many students leave a traditional school and go into an alternative school. And stay there through completions. Because that's the purpose of the alternative school. So persistence is twenty percent. School achievement is only twenty percent in this model and growth is sixty percent. So really, it's almost flipped from the traditional model. Um the Tar River Academy has done very well in this model over the years. In fact, in twenty-two, twenty-three. They earned a status of maintaining. They don't get a letter grade. They get a maintaining, declining or increasing. Progressing, progressing, maintaining or declining. And they have either progressed or maintained there. Um since we've been using this model. So this would be, require a vote on your part. Superintendent does recommend this for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Time of school at our final um committee meeting for today will be the administrative. Services and Operations Committee is the start.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the ASO committee meeting to order. Um roll call please, Mike Dunton. Dr. Davis.
Here.
Franklin Lamb. Sharon the Bull.
Here.
With that said, I need a motion to approve the meetings from the last meeting, minutes from the last meeting. It's been probably moved by Mr. Lamb saying second by night, question or discussions. You're in on also the favors, say I. Any opposed? We have two informational items on the, the ASO committee tonight. The first one will be done by. Uh Ms. Jill Wallace, the RFP process for legal representation.
Good evening. So based on information that was shared, a request came to discuss the RFP process. So I stand before you tonight to pretty much just review this process with you. And let you know how it works for our district in case you're interested in moving forward. So we do have policies that speak to the RFP process. Those policies do focus primarily on federal programs. As well as capital outlay um items, but we do follow the same process for any other. Items that we have to bid on and we did the same thing when we looked into a new vendor for our benefits. So according to policy sixty-three forty, formal bids equal to ninety thousand dollars or more. The purchase of apparatus, supplies, materials or equipment. For expenditures equal to or more than ninety thousand dollars must be secured through the competitive bid process. And that's governed by that general statute. According to policy sixty-four fifty, services will be purchased in a manner consistent with the board's purchasing goals. The board generally does not require competitive bidding for the purchasing of services. However, contracts for services will be made under conditions that foster. Competition among potential providers with feasible and after careful pricing. We also have policy ninety-one twenty-five. That speaks to the fact that we don't discriminate or we're not biased to any of the vendors that may like to bid. The board will award public. Building contracts without regard to race, religion, color, creed, national origin, sex, age or disability. Nothing in this policy should be construed to require the board or contractors to award contracts or subcontractors. To minority businesses contractors or minority business subcontractors. Who do not submit lowest responsible responsive bid or bids. So the steps in the RFP process are as follows. Number one, you have to plan for the RFP by creating a panel. And that panel would be this group, members of this group to vet the submitted proposals. You establish a timeline and determine a specific criteria that should be included in the bid. Number two, we do have to advertise the RFP. We can do that through web page, newspapers, social media, et cetera. Number three, we must share the date, time and location of how and when the proposal should be submitted. Number four, all proposals submitted prior to the deadline are considered and reviewed by the review team. Number five, the panel collectively reviews the submitted proposal and uses a rubric to evaluate the proposals. Six, the review panel selects a vendor based on the results of the evaluation. And last, the vendors are notified in writing if they are awarded the contract and or if they aren't awarded the contract. That's pretty much the process that our district had used for other bidding and it does adhere to our policy. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Next slide, one agenda is, I'm sorry, Mike. Dr. Ellis. Yes, sir. So in addition to that, also, if we can take a look at what. Our current contract looks like as far as expiration. When is it expired? Dr. Ellis, demerger.
All right, so yes, it's a time. We'll speed this up. Short gave me that look. Um but what we do is uh. We've been coming to the board every month and we started with discussion of the demerger. We kind of tell you where we were. Um in the process. So we continue to have the meetings with Edgecombe County Schools. Um but tonight, what I want to do is share kind of like a template that we've agreed upon between each county. That this template will be sent to DPI where we draft our department. It'll be the final department. So um and then after that, I'm gonna share a timeline of what we're doing up till November to for the board. Mr. Ward is going to come up here and share the template. If you have any questions, now let, let me rephrase this. This is a draft. You're going to receive this draft. But what we keep doing is when we met with Edgecombe the other day, we start adding things to it, we take things away. There's going to be links in this draft to merchandise, buildings, teacher staff. You're going to get a five hundred foot drop today, but the template will look like. If you have any concerns or questions about it, each one of the departments could stand up and answer where they are. Your board. First, I also want to thank Mr. Ward because I know when he stepped foot. He's drinking from a water hose right now because we have been doing a lot of stuff. Time we need. So between Mr. Ford, Ms. Finch, I appreciate, we've got some good stuff that's going on. So I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And as Dr. Ellis said, this is a five hundred foot drop, so I hope everyone has on a parachute, even me. Okay, at our last meeting, uh Miss Heather Finch did a great job of providing you with an overview. From a historical perspective in terms of how we got to where we are right now, starting with um the consolidation. Of Nash Rocky Mount Schools and then coming back to Nash County Schools. And now we're going through another transformation with the demerger process. So the purpose here tonight is to sort of give you a brief overview of where we are and where we're heading. Looking at highlighting some of those core responsibilities from each one of our respective departments um as they will come forward. Um later on in the process and share with you where they are and where we're headed. Uh please keep in mind that this is a working, living document, substitute change. Every time we get new information. Um information goes in, information comes out. So this is a working, living document that we're working on. I will say it has been a team effort and Dr. Ellis did give a shout out to me, but I want to thank everyone behind me that's working on this process as well because it's a collective. Um effort is going to be a collective achievement as well. Uh so at this time, I will call forth Miss Heather Finch to go over the core responsibilities and after Ms. Finch. We will have respective members of our departments or divisions to come up and share out where they are in their, in this process.
Good evening, everyone. How are you all?
Great.
Thank you. I'm going to get right down to it so we can get everybody from the departments up here to do a debrief on it. So the core responsibilities, um you all already know the office of the superintendent and what those roles, that role embodies. So we're going to go ahead, right on down. So what we've done here is we've stapled out what each department's responsibilities and their goals are in the planning process. For what we need to submit to the state per um, per legislation. So I think what might be well suited, if you keep on scrolling, Mr. Tremaine McQueen. We're going to start right here with um going through the transition planning teams. Each week we meet Monday. Every Monday, we meet with the cabinet and we review what we're doing, where we are and how we're going to get there. Not only from here to November fifteenth, but from here until the end of July when everything has to be transferred over. So what you're going to see here, and you can keep scrolling down, this is about thirty pages. Um this will be broken up with how the different committees that we have. And then on Wednesdays, we meet with senior cabinet. Mr. Ward and I meet with the senior cabinet members and we go through stuff that went through on Monday. And most likely every Tuesday, we are in correspondence directly with Edgecombe County Public Schools and our counterparts over there. So um we're going to stop right here and scroll up. Thank you. Uh one of the first parts you will hear about uh regarding the division of the assets. And I believe that information is also included under Ms. Angie Miller's portion as well as combined with um. Ms. Wallace for HR and uh Mr. McQueen. The reason why we put in review right now because those, that information is currently in review with the attorneys. And also with respect with Edgecombe County Public Schools as well. So I think it might be for the best interest of time. Um I believe the first, is it Ms. Dr. Pharaoh's, the first part? Student engagement. That's me. I'll just stay here. I'll keep talking. So um we had Edgecombe County Public Schools held their first um. Their first meeting two weeks ago at Theory View Elementary. We are having a. Nash County Public Schools forum for Nash County residents that attend before schools. That will be transferring over to Edgecombe County Public Schools on Tuesday, September nineteenth. Uh we have been working closely with Edgecombe County Public Schools to um to make sure we mirror what that outline will look. Like at those events. Um we have already pushed this out to our families across the district, focusing on those four schools as well. And for the first thirty minutes, we have an interpreter to touch on the students and families who have Spanish as a first or second language. And then for the remaining part uh from five thirty to six thirty, each department will speak on. Where we are, what we're going through right now and the next steps. Basically, similar to the presentation in which y'all received um on August seventh, when we had the last meeting. Uh the following week, which is not on here, with Edgecombe County Public Schools will be having their second forum at DS Johnson. And what we are doing to help support them is to get in touch with, we're reaching out to our families. Who are Edgecombe County residents who attend Nash County Public Schools, so they can be informed of when. The meetings are being held for Edgecombe County. So we believe by working together, we're able to reach a farther audience to the families. And the guardians of which this will impact. So the next slated date, because you have to have three public forums. Um to talk about this will be uh in mid-October and maybe mid uh November. Um and you can keep going down. So exhibit four, it shows you the um information. These are alternative dates right now, but this is for the EC families in which those folks who may be impacted. Those are going to most likely be under, they will be under Ms. Grant. And will be in person with the families or virtual sessions because all of those are handled differently. And then exhibit five. Well, sorry, I apologize. That is for under someone else's, but if y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Quick question.
Sure.
If you slide down just a little bit on the dates, is it okay to have one of the dates after the submission of the plan?
To have a date submission. You mean the sixteen?
The, the submission of the plan has to be November fifteenth, right? And it's okay to have.
Oh yeah, absolutely, because they don't, I mean. As long as we have it included in the document of when we're meeting, yes. It would be impossible to rush all this right before. Oh yeah, understood. Thank you. Okay, yeah, no, this so, this is for the um EC families. So if you scroll back up. That's going to be at their respected schools. Mm-hmm. And so right now for November, and that's tentative. The date, because we're, we're thinking maybe the TRC building or Edwards. It just depends on. Chairs and all the other things. And also, we're working again with Edgecombe County as well. I want to make sure we mirror when that is.
Any other questions? I have one.
Sure.
You said there would be three public format, four forms?
Mm-hmm.
Is it three per county or collectively?
So we are, because they are receiving the students. And they have to do the reassignment to figure out what they're going to be doing as in Nash County, I mean, excuse me, Edgecombe County. It's different from what we are doing. So. We have three sep- it needs to be two separate. Yes, yes, sir. You're welcome. And then I know that Dr. Pharaoh will probably speak on that more later, if not tonight. But as we go through and meet. throughout next month or this month, will be what happens with ours and what that will look like come next winter. You're welcome. Give me a break, shall I? Okay. But go back up to where I finished with the EC plan. We're gonna jump right into, I believe it's start of Pharaoh's, is right off the bat. I think, EC, sorry, excuse me, staff engagement.
Okay, so in terms of staffing, this just gives you an overview of how many staff members that we have at each of the schools that we will be transferring over to Edgecombe County during the demerger. It is broken down by certified, full-time, part-time, and classified, full-time, part-time. And this area right here is going to have an itemized dollar amount based on the assets that were purchased underneath federal funding and the different PRCs underneath federal funding. We have already started the process of inventorying all of the assets or equipment that has been purchased with federal program, well, federal funding up until this point. And we would then itemize it and attach to spreadsheet so they have an itemized list of the items to decide upon if they want to purchase those items or not. Because they will have to pay for those items that were paid through federal. And we did use the depreciated value, which is a calculation or the formula that federal guidances provide us with, okay? And that will be outlined underneath these different categories. Any questions about that part?
So the student transfer timeline and for the sakes of time, I'm trying not to get too far down in this because it can can be a little messy. I would like to point out several things. July, August, we were more along the lines of talking with Edgecombe, trying to figure some things out about the the grade levels that would possibly be staying with us and those that would be going to Edgecombe. Right now, tentatively, we have on the table that those students who are currently in kindergarten through eighth grade would transfer to Edgecombe County Public Schools. The students who are currently in ninth through twelfth grade would stay, be grandfathered with Nash County Public Schools. So for, if we would jump forward to September this month and October, our plan is to communicate with our communications department to work out, work out a plan to send out information to the families on the Edgecombe County side of Rocky Mount about the tentative plan that is coming. We don't want to get too far ahead of the plan because we know that all four boards have to approve the plan. And we would wait, we would like to wait and really start talking about the details once the plan has been approved. And then in November and December, we would have community, community meetings, two community meetings, one in November, one in December, focusing on the families on the Edgecombe County Public, Edgecombe County School side of Rocky Mount so that we could share information with them about our transfer process. And then we would go into January, February, March. We would work our transfer process. And then in April, May, June, we will be looking to make sure that all of that paperwork and the necessary communication has been done. Any families that don't understand, make sure that they have the appropriate information so that those children who are staying with us will stay with us and those who are going to Edgecombe will go to Edgecombe County Public Schools. That's the down and dirty of it. Any questions for me? Thank you.
You'll see in this plan, you've got things like safety and security. So what do we do with EVOL? Cameras, signage, all that has to be worked out. All that was some of the conversations we had this week with them. Things like transportation or buses go. But you'll see some of this in the plan. You're not gonna see numbers or more, but you're just gonna see a five hundred foot drop like the board said of how we're gonna start this. Edgecombe meeting the other day wants to kind of mimic this template. So when we produce it together, it'll all flow together. So we're pulling out, they're pulling in, different dynamics that we discussed. So you're gonna see a pure technology. One of the bigger issues that we're facing now is probably this Wallace's Department of Federal a lot of federal merchandise that it doesn't do. So we're now showing the information, the links and that those items to Edgecombe, but they'll know. Edgecombe's in a different position now because they just hired superintendent. He was not our last beat, so we're gonna make sure he understands. It was written in the word, but we just want you to see what this template's gonna look like. Because in the end, it's gonna be a bound book with everything from items, links, property that goes DPI, it's gonna be bound and then we turn it in. You will see this timeline at the next meeting being more and more precise as dates and community meetings, student meetings. But I tell you that what we need to make sure we're doing, if we did a good job the other day, when you get in, come on that side, we make sure our meetings are in they're not up to there. We want to know what they're discussing because our kids are gonna want to know where we're gonna go to school. We want to make sure we don't have a meeting prior to them naming what school. So we're trying to make sure we're having the same type of conversations. The only thing I must, my last, I'm just gonna show you this timeline. So we're presenting it. We got up here, set to the physics where we talk with Edgecombe Public Schools. We're gonna present this draft to the board today. We're completing this document. It's an ongoing thing, but Edgecombe and Nash joint meeting is gonna be next Tuesday. We're gonna start asking the board if you want to come to some of the small group presentations, three more minutes. Have a, I'm gonna send out a calendar so you can come, or zoom in. Where our cabinet starts presenting more definite details. So what does it look like? What, you know, when is Dr. Herbert to meet? What are we talking about? And we're gonna give you some dates, because we want you to see this before we present it to the committee meeting, which will be October, which will be late September. Because then we present the full plan around October. We're gonna now present the plan to the county commissioners on the night. I think I received that date today. Then for about a good month, you're gonna be able to meet with us and have some revisions, finals of what you think we need to put in, what we need to take out. And what we like to do, we talked with Edgecombe the other day, is have both commissioners meetings at one time so we can all do it one time. Edgecombe presents, we present both entities. And then we present that plan at one time. But then I want you to remember there's a phase two in this process for us. We still have to talk about the four or five hundred kids that will not have school. So that'll be phase two, which we'll begin talking about in January, December, January. Or EC State will have finished their analysis of where everyone, you know, the district looks like. Then we're gonna present, so where can these kids go? Okay, so that won't be in this plan. This will be just a demerger piece, but then there'll be a second plan that we start talking about in January. And I know that's a lot at one time, but we just wanted to share this template of what is gonna start with. Any questions?
I got a question, sir. First of all, I make comment, I appreciate what you and your staff are doing outstanding job. Victor, I appreciate you standing up commenting the other night with the words that you said. I think you guys are really working hard. You've been working hard for the last two years, just putting together information. And so it's represented what you see here. My question is, what do you see as your biggest challenge when it comes to this demerger?
So I think the challenge we're facing is so where are the kids gonna be going to school? We know what our student meetings are gonna be like. Parents are gonna get up and ask, okay, so we're not going, we're not gonna be in Nash County, so where we going? And you don't wanna, you want Edgecombe to be able to make that decision, I can't. So they presented three options, I think at the last meeting, Mr. Ward, that they're voting on. I think once they clear that up, that'll help us ease some of that burden for some of the parents. The second problem, I don't know if it's a problem, but when you're talking about this asset piece, you know, we're gonna have students in the building until June. So whatever transfers, whether you're keeping this item or you're not, there's about a four or five week window where we have to staff, pull the staff out, put them in another school, merchandise, technology. We've gotta find out, are you gonna purchase this or you're not? Because then we've gotta go into these schools.
So are they giving you, are you giving them a timeline to give you what assets they wanna purchase?
So we started that conversation too.
That would give you some type of leeway for that, right?
But it's tough when, when you're in the room, the superintendent's not there. I don't think anyone can really speak for him. So I think that's, that's tough.
Yes, sir.
Question on it. I know we have the inventory, everything. How was that process coming along?
So Ms. Wallace, didn't you just have an audit of all our federal merchandise? So we had that list. It's linked in that document that you see, you'll see it's linked.
Yes, ma'am.
So you'll get the one from me that's cleaner. You'll get that. You'll be able to see that.
The other challenge I think that we're gonna have is basically the consolidation of working with both county commissioners and the we do my grandfathering students. That means somebody's gotta pay the cost for it. So I'm sure you guys are working through that as well. You know, a question or discussions. Hearing none, I'd like to call the ASO committee meeting to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Shar. If there's no further committee business, I will adjourn the committee meetings at this time. And then I would like to call the work session to order. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Hello.
Second, motion made by Board Member Edwards for the record, seconded by Board Member Thomas Fuller. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carried. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
May the chair, I make the motion that go into closed session, through the agenda statute of one forty-three, that three eighteen, that eleven, A one, A three, and A three. The venue is closed, but a proper event is present, but I'm here to be one lifting three, that something one. To consider matters relating to the listed component on any of the work employees. If the venue is closed, the upper bench, that is, I mean, damage that the one lifting three, that more OJ. And to consult with the board attorney in order to be there as attorney's client at the court.
Do I second?
Certainly.
Motion made by Board Member E. Bullock, seconded by Board Member Shar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carried. We're now going to close session.